We'll call this meeting to order. Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the Board of Education for Martinez Unified. We had previously adjourned to closed session and we do have a few matters to report out. On motion of Member McLaughlin, seconded by Member Wright, the Board voted in closed session to expel student number 2018-19-4 from the Martinez Unified by the following vote of five in favor, no abstentions. On motion of Member McLaughlin, seconded by Member Fuller, the Board voted in closed session to expel student number 2018-19-5 from the Martinez Unified School District by the following vote, four in favor, one no, no abstentions. On motion of Member McLaughlin, seconded by Member Horack, the Board voted in closed session to expel student number 2018-19-6 from the Martinez Unified School District by the following vote of five in favor and no abstentions. On motion of Member Wright, seconded by Member Fuller, the Board voted in closed session to readmit student number 2017-18-3 to the Martinez Unified School District by the following vote of five in favor with no abstentions.
Deirdre?
Yes.
I think you actually have to, when we have a non-unanimous vote, have to list who voted for and who against.
Okay, we can do that. So going back with regard to the vote on expulsion of student number 2018-19-5, we had votes in favor by Members McLaughlin, Member Fuller, Member Horack, and Member Seguenza. The no vote was from Member Wright. And as we, before we get going with the rest of the meeting, I just wanted to remind everybody that we are recording our meeting. We also have the ability to have Spanish translation. If you need a device, please seek advice at the back and as well as if you have a public comment, there are comment cards in the back that you can fill out and it will help us move a little smoother throughout the meeting. All right, so tonight we would like, if you'd please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, I'd like Sylvia Pacheco to lead us.
America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
All right, thank you Sylvia for helping us lead the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, so before we approve the agenda, are there any changes to the agenda tonight? All right, so we'll move forward with the agenda as submitted. Line number eight is approval of minutes of the regular meeting of December 10th, 2018. Are there any questions from the Board? Any public comments? Bringing it back to the Board for approval.
I move we approve the minutes as presented.
Second.
Student vote?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, John abstains and motion carries. Number nine is comments from student representative.
Here are the school reports for January 14th, 2019. So starting off with John Muir today, John Muir Elementary had a successful fire drill, the best drill duration we had all year. John Muir Elementary will be recognized for our recycling efforts by Republic and the City of Martinez at a city council meeting on January 16th at 7:00 PM at City Hall. Next we have John Swett. Fifth graders experienced a walk through the American Revolution where they were able to act out the history of the Revolutionary War. Students are working on the character trait of responsibility in the month of January. Fifth graders will be taking an educational field trip to Angel Island. The PTA meeting is at seven on January 15th. Lunar New Year celebration is at six on February 13th in the cafeteria. Next we have Morello Park. We have our Wildlife Assembly this week and students will get to see rainforest animals. Fifth grade students got to experience walk through Revolution. We had a successful fire drill practice and shelter in place practice the first week back. This week will be our lockdown drill. Two classes already earned an Eagle Party with the principal this week. Our character trait of focus is responsibility. Buddy Day is coming up again. Students will be making cards for American veterans. The ELAC and PTA meeting is this Tuesday on January 15th. The Tree Choppers Book Club is at 6:30 PM. The lockdown drill is on January 17th at 10:30 AM. Report cards will be sent home on Friday, January 25th. And the Eagles Book Club is on January 22nd at 6:30 PM. Next we have Martinez Junior High. The third quarter is underway. The second quarter report cards were mailed home this week. Special day class, science classes, had a great time on a field trip to the Exploratorium in San Francisco. Kudos to the teacher, Robin Flyer, who organized it all. The PTA meeting is Tuesday, January 15th at 7:00 PM. Next we have Alhambra High School. Prior to winter break, Alhambra completed the end of the first semester with our annual final exam schedule and this year we introduced finals fuel snacks on each day of finals, which consisted of granola bars, bottled waters, cutie oranges. We are very appreciative of our PTSA, our AHS families and the community for donating the brain food for each day of the exam schedule. On Friday, January 4th, the girls and boys varsity basketball teams were invited to the Steph Curry Under Armour event in Oakland. As an Under Armour sponsored high school, Alhambra was selected to attend with 11 other local high schools to celebrate Steph Curry's 10 years in the Bay Area. Last Friday, Alhambra's students attended grade level assemblies to roll out the Sandy Hook Promise, Start With Hello program. We had positive feedback from students and staff and look forward to increasing the overall feeling of inclusion, connectedness, involvement, and the positivity at Alhambra. On Saturday, Alhambra Robotics Club competed in the Pittsco/First for Robotics competition. Club advisor Chris McKibben reported that the team was competitive and placed in the middle of the field of high school teams. On Saturday night, we had our Happy New Year slash Welcome Back Dance. Although the dance was light on attendance, those who attended had a great time with their peers. All winter sports, basketball, soccer, and wrestling are in the midst of their league competition schedules. The site council will meet on Thursday, January 17th at 3:00 PM. Next we have Vicente Martinez and Riona's Independent Study. Vicente has added sports medicine to the master schedule. The classes taught by Ms. Barnes and students are excited about this new pathway at Vicente. During the second quarter of the school year, 56% of Vicente's student body achieved an attendance rate of 80% or better. On January 16th, student representatives will meet with Ms. Rossi and Ms. Gallagher to collaborate on Vicente's food service program. Next we have Martinez Adult School. Final registration for Intro to Healthcare Careers classes starts next week. Registration is open for post-module III. Free workshops this week. On January 15th, from 10:30 to 11:30 AM, we have Resume Basics. 11:30 AM to 12:30 PM, we have Cal Job Search. January 16th, 10:30 AM to 11:30 AM, Assess Your Strength. And January 17th, from 10:30 AM to 11:30 AM, is Learning LinkedIn. This concludes the school reports for January 14th, 2019.
Great, thanks so much. Number 10 is Employee Organization Reports. Do we have a report?
Hi, I'm Karen Slifer. I am the new CSEA president, elected, and I wanted to just say I look forward to working with all of you over the next year. Thank you.
Thanks Karen. MEA?
I want to say congratulations to Karen. I've known her for a very, very long time. She is very organized. She was president of our PTA back at John Swett School. She's transparent, she's hardworking, she's organized, and I look forward to working with you. Congratulations. I'm also very excited about attending the Governor's Workshop tomorrow. CTA has already come out with some of the budget implications. It looks like we're going to have a new all-time high of $80.7 billion from our Proposition 98 Guarantee, which is an additional $435 per pupil, more than this year for next year. I think that's very, very exciting. COLA will be going up to 3.46. And another exciting bit of news is that they will be offsetting the amount the districts are having to pay for Calsters and Calpers retirement by about a percent. So all of that is excellent news and I can't wait to hear more. There's all kinds of other money coming too. Gavin Newsom turns out to be a real friend of education, so thank you.
Great, thank you. Next are comments from the PTA. Do we have anyone here from PTA tonight? All right, seeing none, we're going to move on to staff and board reports. For those of you who pore over the agenda every time we have a meeting, you'll notice there's a little bit of a change with this item. We've added acknowledgements, announcements, and reports. And as a Board, last year, at the end of our meeting, we tend, a lot of you don't stick around for our meetings, and we tend to do little announcements of things that we're doing and we realize that we're kind of just talking to ourselves. So we'll see how this works at this, at this location in our agenda, but this will be the time, if there's any announcements for any of us here, including student rep, that we can at least get the word out at the beginning of our meeting as to things that you think might be of interest to the folks here in the room and then of course, anyone who is listening to the meeting. So CJ, why don't you kick us off? Do you have any announcements?
Welcome back to 2019. As we come back, we usually have our CSEA, which is our Classified Professional Development Day as we start the new year. Thank you. And in that process, I want to acknowledge Mr. Dopey, April Thompson, and Lisa Greenwood for their help in collaborating and planning the day for our classified personnel. It's always nice to ensure that they have a day of professional development. There's a lot that comes out of it from a skill building standpoint and also from a networking standpoint amongst our classified employees. And at the same time, going back to my days as a teacher and principal, acknowledging the incredible work that our MEA members are doing this time of year when they are poring through hours and hours and hours of report cards and comments and grading and making sure that everything is dialed in so that they're communicating to their students and their families in a meaningful way. And I want to make sure that we acknowledge the work that our MEA members are doing in that regard this time of year while simultaneously planning for their second semester. Thank you.
All right, I'm just going to keep moving along this way. I just wanted to say Happy New Year. Also, thank you to all of our teachers and congratulations to all of our students who completed their tests at the end of the vacation. Hopefully they were, they've all come back rested and ready to take on this semester's challenges. And I also wanted to throw a kind of a shout out. I know we're kind of midway on all of our extracurricular activities. We have a lot of, not only teachers, but people in the community that are out there and volunteering to do a lot of work with our students and student athletes. And a lot of that work is being done right now and continues throughout the year, so I wanted to wish our teams, as they're heading, some of them are heading into some of the championships and district activities, wish them well. And also acknowledge that this Wednesday, we have our next subcommittee meeting for the Safety Committee. Bobby?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to let everybody know what the status is of Martinez Ed Foundation. The grant applications have gone out and they've come back in. We have 49 grants from teachers in the district, which we love getting all those grants. And on Thursday, we will be meeting to determine the allocation of the funding for those grants. It's a pretty exciting meeting. It's my favorite of the year and I'm really thrilled that we have participation from every single school, including the Martinez Early Intervention Preschool in our grant process. And so that's, that's very exciting.
I don't have anything to say other than welcome back and look forward to working with everybody in the next year.
John?
I'm going to take a few minutes. I hope everybody can be patient with me. You know, sometimes we make mistakes in life and you find out a long time after you made the mistake. It's come to my attention back in June that some of my statements might have, or let's not even say might have, have offended some people. We had a discussion on the PLA and to be honest, I wasn't quite prepared. I thought this would go back to the subcommittee and it was a general discussion at that time. During this discussion, I thought there were some important issues to be brought up. Basically was conflict of interest between transparency of donors. From my comments, which I take full responsibility for, I guess I didn't frame the discussion quite the way I wanted to. The way I framed the discussion was to say that there were some donors and there was some conflict of interest. I don't have any problems with donors. People donate to people who usually have the same belief system or the same agenda. But from what I understand, some people thought I was insinuating that there was public corruption or, let's see, I'm sorry, there was public corruption or votes were for sale. That was the farthest thing from my intent. There is no public corruption. Votes weren't for sale. I just thought when we have an issue that involved that much amount of money, that donors or that conflict of interest and transparency was the most important thing. I had hoped to have that conversation in a subcommittee so it could be presented correctly. We didn't. I am responsible for the way I framed the discussion. The fact that I offended some people, I truly apologize for this. Thank you.
Thanks, John. Kathy?
Yeah, I wanted to do a follow-up, Brenda, on your comment. I noticed that Governor Newsom, I have to remember to say which government, yeah, Governor Newsom actually called out the California School Boards Association for their support and advocacy as it relates to the Calsters and Calpers issue. That that's the only thing he ever heard any school board member say in any time he met with him. So I want to give a shout out to CSBA because sometimes it feels like our money goes off and our time goes off and nothing happens. In this instance, something good really did come out of that. That's number one. And number two, I also wanted to let people know that there is a Mental Health Services Act Community Forum. On Wednesday, it will be in Richmond at the Richmond Auditorium, starting at 3:00 to 3:30, I think is the sign-in time. And the subject this time will be immigration. So if you have some concerns about immigration and mental health issues, that would be a place to go to air them. Anybody is welcome to go. You don't need to RSVP or anything else, although if you would like translation services, you might want to let me know so I can make sure that they know to have the right translation services available. Thank you.
Thank you. Atima?
So I just want to wish Happy New Year to everyone in this room. So I want to start off with a week prior to winter break, I just want to thank everyone who donated the fuel food. That was honestly a great touch and we all, a lot of the students liked it, just having a snack, because there's a lot of students out there that don't eat breakfast and skip it. So that was very considerate of the school and everyone who's part of donating the food. All of us students really enjoyed that. And then I also wanted to shout out to all the teachers and staff too, who were preparing all the students for the finals, getting all the grades in, responding to student emails, because I know that could be tough at times when you have like just a bunch of emails. So I just wanted to say thank you to all the teachers and I hope second semester goes well for both students and staff as well. And then last week, we did have the Sandy Hook Assembly on Friday and that was an amazing assembly. I would be walking around school campus and I would just hear students talking about how great the assembly was and how it touched some people. So from my personal views, I liked it a lot. It was really touching and the way it was presented, I think was very, was able to, many students were able to connect with that assembly and the speaker as well. So that's all I have to say.
Great, thanks so much. All right, so we're going to move on to 12.1, which is our adult school updates.
All right, good evening and thank you for giving us the opportunity tonight to present on Martinez Adult Education. Little slideshow to go along with the presentation. We had a very successful year last year, I feel, as an adult school, and I wanted to highlight some of the outcomes, the new programs and services, and some success stories of our students that were with us last year and into this year. Starting with 2017-18, how we ended the year. The adult school provided services for over 1,700 adults in Martinez and the surrounding communities. Adult students took advantage of earning their high school diploma, passing their high school equivalency test, training for a new career, increasing literacy skills, studying and passing their citizenship test, or taking advantage of a workshop for job preparation. We had 22 students, 22 students who earned their high school diploma or passed the high school equivalency test. We had 172 students obtain employment, many of them earning certificates through our career technical education programs. We had 378 students that increased their salary or got a job where they increased their potential earnings. 120 students transferred to post-secondary, most of them to Diablo Valley College because of our strong partnership that we have with them. Many students are co-enrolled still with the adult school and with Diablo Valley College. And finally, we had five students that became citizens and participated in our citizenship class. Moving on to the next slide. Okay. One more, Tom, I don't know if you can advance. Technical. Number three, so I'll go on. So number three slide. Go down three. All right, so I'll go on. The adult school also opened some new program course offerings this last year. One more up. So this fall, we added a series of classes for the current paraeducators in the district and those interested in becoming a paraeducator. So the picture, which is a couple slides up, is the fall cohort of paraeducators in the district. Up, up, there you go, there's, there it is. They participated, this is a group of current paraeducators, and they participated in and completed technology use, which is supporting students with Google applications. They also went on to continue their course route to complete their 15 units of continuing education. This course helped the current paraeducators to move on the salary chart to move up, but it also helped them assist the students in the district that they support. So we're continuing these courses. They are offered for free and it's for current paraeducators or those aspiring to be a paraeducator in the district, and those are offered on Thursday afternoons. As we continued on with our new programs, we added an afternoon class for ESL at La Suntis Elementary School. There was a request by parents that they have an afternoon class and they needed childcare. So with the help of a Share the Spirit Grant through Contra Costa Crisis Center, we were able to open the class and offer childcare, but as well as the parents learning, the toddlers are also learning in this environment and it's helping them with preschool and readiness for TK. We've been able to purchase some books and some manipulatives to help the students while the parents are learning, the students are learning too. We also added a dispatch class to our Peace Officers Standards and Training Program, our post-program. This fall, we had 24 students enrolled who completed this dispatch class. It's a 911 dispatch class and we'll be offering another one in the spring. We had an optical assistance program that because of budget cuts, we had to cut. It was a very popular program. I'm happy to say that we brought it back this last fall. We partnered with some employers in the area as well as Walmart being one of our partnerships, and we're providing training and certification for the optical assistance. The adult school also adopted a curriculum through Diablo Valley College to offer a pre-apprenticeship math class. Students can earn credit for their high school diploma while also taking advantage of this pre-apprenticeship math class that prepares them for different maths and different trades. We're going to add to this class in the spring, we're going to add some essential skills with this pre-apprenticeship training where they'll be trained, they'll do some training and collaboration, team building, resiliency, and generational awareness to help prepare them for apprenticeship. We also started a medical careers class mainly for our English second language learners, but it's open to everyone. This basically gives them the opportunity to explore different medical careers. The class has guest speakers every other week and also incorporates worksite tours. We ran it last year and we're going to be starting it actually next week. We incorporated many, many free workshops. We're running them monthly, actually most of them weekly. We're doing free community workshops for resume writing, resume review, mock interviews, and creating online professional presence using LinkedIn. One of the services that is now exists at the adult school came out of a partnership, well, a collaboration between all the organizations listed. It's the seven adult schools in, I'm sorry, four of the seven adult schools in Contra Costa County, Community College District, and also several community-based organizations. We came together to form what we call the Contra Costa Workforce Collaborative. You may have read a little bit about it. We applied and were awarded through Contra Costa County to provide WEOWA services, that is employment services, at all of the locations listed. Martinez Adult Education is now an official access site where people that are looking for jobs who are unemployed for jobs who are unemployed, underemployed, can come and receive services for free. We actually have a designated career coach on Monday and Tuesdays at our site, as well as our staff trained in that. That has been able to help us offer many of these free resources I talked to you about and assist members of the community in employment. So those are quite a few new things and exciting things we have going on this year. I wanted to finish out by highlighting some students from last year in our different departments and how they're doing, what they accomplished, where are they at the school, and where they are now. So in our high school diploma department, we had a graduate, his name is Ulysses Garcia. He came to the adult school to take night classes. He was working during the day and he had a definite goal in mind. He needed to achieve his high school diploma because he was very much interested in becoming an apprentice with the local three operating engineers. In order to even apply, he needed to have his high school diploma and he had to pass an entrance exam. While he was taking classes at night and receiving his diploma, he did apply for the apprenticeship. He passed the exam and he passed the interview. As soon as he completed his diploma last June, he was offered a job and is now a first year apprentice with the local three as a heavy equipment operator. Kathy Salini, and some of you may recognize her picture, longtime resident here in Martinez, who's worked in the restaurant industry for many years. She came back to the adult school, very apprehensive, wanting to explore new career ideas and hadn't been in school for quite a while. She enrolled in one of our very rigorous programs, which is our Microsoft Office Bootcamp, and it really is a bootcamp. She took it on, she finished, and she actually graduated with an Executive Administrative Assistant Program Certification. She's now working full-time in her new career and has only two classes left to finish an associate's degree at the college, which she has said she is going to complete. This is Francisco Areola. He is one of our graduates of our post-academy, Peace Officers Standards and Training. And Francisco came to us last summer. He had aspirations of becoming a police officer. He works during the day currently as a correctional officer and needed to find an academy that was in the evening, which he searched and searched. And Martinez offers a police academy, basic modules during the evening hours. He had to keep working during the day to support his family. During, he finished our modular three and modular two graduation was in December. Three weeks before graduation, he became a father to a little girl. This is a picture of them at graduation. I was really excited to congratulate him and also meet his daughter. She was 21 days old and this was at graduation. So he's completed his coursework and he's waiting to enroll in modular one, which is the last course he needs to complete before he can apply to be a police officer. You might recognize this person. This is Sylvia Pacheco. She also goes by Patty. She led us in the pledge of allegiance today. Patty came through our ESL program. Actually, Patty came to the United States from Guatemala in 2013. She began her studies in Martinez Adult Education as a beginning ESL student. Patty quickly mastered all the levels of ESL and earned her advanced ESL certificate. She then enrolled in our high school diploma department program and passed her GED. She took part in an evening citizenship class and became a citizen in 2017. She didn't stop there. She continued on and entered one of our career training programs and earned an accounting specialist certification through our business training center. Patty's the parent of two children in Martinez School District, and as of December, she's now a Martinez Unified School District employee. Patty's the adult school evening front office person. So I really want to thank you. There's, there's so many stories, just like what I've told you about the students. I wanted to highlight just a few in some of the programs. One of the things I want to do today, and I think Rob, you've got some postcards, we really want to celebrate this year because starting in 2019 celebrates the 100th year of the adult school and we are going to celebrate. We want to ask you to save the date of April 17. From 12 to 2, we have a celebration planned to commemorate the 100th year anniversary of the existence of the adult school. So thank you very much for the time to present and I appreciate it. If there's any questions or comments at this time, otherwise, thank you.
Thanks, Susan. Are there, are there any questions on the board? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming in and sharing these stories and thank you for, for introducing us to, to the day-to-day and the people who are, who you're working with. And we really appreciate Patty, you coming in and being a part of our meeting tonight. Thank you. Okay. The next section is public comments. This is number 13. Under Government Code Section 54954.3, members of the public have the right to address the board on any matter within the board's jurisdiction. However, the board may not take action on any non-agenda item. The individual speakers will be allowed three minutes to address the board. 20 minutes have been allocated for this portion of the agenda. Additional time is allowed at the end of the meeting if there was not enough time to speak during public comments. And for anybody who hasn't turned in any public comment cards, now would be the time to do that. Do we have any? All right. Is, are there any public comments at this time that haven't filled out a card? Seeing none, we'll move on and the portion at the end of the meeting will not be needed. Number 14 is the consent calendar. Are there any changes to the consent calendar? All right. With that amendment, are there any questions from the board? Are there any public comments on the consent calendar? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board for action.
Motion to approve.
As amended?
As amended, yes.
Great.
Second.
All right. It's moved and seconded. Student vote.
Aye.
For the board, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. All right. 15 is our items for board consideration or action. We'll begin with 15.1, which is the annual developer fee report and resolution number 2019-9 of regarding the accounting of development fees for the 2017-2018 fiscal year. This is an action item and it's presented by Helen.
Sure you remember back in November, on the 26th, I presented a developer fee report and a resolution. And this is the action item that accompanies the information item back from November 2 that says that we have the account set up for our developer fees and that account is growing with the collection of developer fees, level two and level one, as outlined on the November 26th presentation. So what I'm asking the board is to approve, or accept, take action and accept the resolution.
Do we have any board questions? Any public comment? Seeing none, we'll bring it back for the board.
I move, we approve resolution 2019-9.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded. Student vote.
Aye.
For the board, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. 15.2 is the review of single plans for student achievement. This is also an action item and it is presented by Tom Doppie.
Well, my microphone's working, so. I guess just pass me notes all night. I apologize. Single plans were brought to at our last meeting. As you recall, these are the goals and actions that each site develop in conjunction with their site council. Some of the major themes are around improving our site level assessment, collecting, or creating common assessment, as well as looking at behaviors and how we can do interventions and supports for our students. And so they're here before you tonight for final action.
Any, any more questions?
No questions, just a comment. I really appreciate the fact that our site plans are reflecting the LCAP now and not so random as we go through them. So I really appreciate that, that consistency that we're seeing from site to site.
Any other board questions, comments? I also wanted to thank everybody who, not only at the, at the districts, but at the site level, including our site councils who've taken the labor of doing this for us. So I'd like to thank them for their time and in bringing this forward for us as well. Are there any public questions, public comments on this? Tingma?
In the Briones single plan with the Vicente, it, and I talked to Lori and I talked to other people also, the staffing for Briones was listed as 68 and current practice is 63. We're staffed at 2.1. Historically, full-time employee is 30 students, halftime, .5% is 15, and 8.6 is 18. And in the single plan, it states 68 rather than 63. So I just wanted to make that comment. Thank you.
Any other public comments? All right. We'll bring it back to the board. Are, these are, these are, I have a question. These documents are, can be changed and modified to reflect practices? Is it changed or?
Be changed, but they will need to be changed first by the school site, site council process the same way they come to us. So if the board were approved them, to approve them tonight, they certainly can go back to the school site at the site council level to be revised by that group and then brought back forward to the board.
Great. Thank you. All right. Any other comments or discussion by the board? Otherwise, it is an action item.
I move to adopt.
Student vote.
Aye.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Passes unanimously. 15.3 is the adoption of CSBA policies and administrative regulations. It's also an action item and I'll turn it over to CJ.
Thank you. As was presented in the December 10th meeting, these policies from CSBA reviewed by staff and presented to the board came forward and they are from the updates of December 2017, July 2018, and October 2018. And the board is being asked to approve the policies as presented. They did come before the board December 10th.
Thank you. Any board questions on these policies and regulations? Public comment? We'll move it back to the board for action.
I move to adopt.
It's been moved and seconded. Student vote.
Aye.
All right. Everyone catch your breath? All right. We're good. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carried. All right. 15.4 is the adoption and resolution of 2019-13, supporting the designation of district representatives and authorization to file applications for full-day kindergarten facilities grant program. This is for information and possible action and I'll turn this over to Helen.
In last year's budget, the governor put aside some money to help districts that have current TK kinder enrollment but don't have the facilities to allow for full day to apply for grants should they decide to go for full day to help with the cost of facilities. In the, in, while we were going through John Muir planning and we planned for the kindergarten, the construction of the new building and the kindergarten classes, should we decide to go for full-day kindergarten? We're requesting, we have the plans drawn, we're requesting that we pass the resolution, which is needed in order to be able to get in line for money, to see if we'll even get it. And so the resolution goes along with that. Should we decide not to go for full day, we would not accept the money and, and not go through with it. But should we, further down the line, as we get closer to opening, decide that that's what we're going to do in the district, at least we haven't lost an opportunity. I believe right now, I read in the update from Governor Newsom's budget, that another $750 million is going to be put towards this facilities fund for full-day kindergarten as well. So this puts us in line to get the money, should we decide to make that decision.
All right. And this is for facilities only?
Sorry. Yes. Facilities.
All right. And any other board questions on this? All right. I'm going to open it up to public comment and we'll decide if it's going to be an action item or just information after public comment. Are there any public comments on this?
I just want to add, I forgot to say that it's about $750,000 for John Muir. Should we decide to go for full day, that would be the amount that we're going for.
And what does that represent, Helen? What, what, what's the 750?
The $750,000 would be for three of the four classrooms because the, the building is being built for four. One would be TK and the other three would be kindergarten. Right now, John Muir houses three half-day kindergartens and a half-day TK. Under this, we'd allow, we'd be able to go to three full-day kindergartens and that 750 would be so much per classroom.
Would we?
About 250 a classroom, 250,000 a classroom.
Would we be?
For construction.
I'm sorry. Would, would we be able to get, to apply for, for this grant or the possibility of receiving these grants at any of the other elementary schools?
Yes. As we move forward in our design process, we have to be in the design process. We have to have the plan. We're not farther, far enough along in the other schools to be able to submit a request at this time. But we don't want to lose an opportunity or, no.
So the other issue with the other elementary schools is not that we don't want to do full day, but right now, we're not equipped to handle full day? Is that correct? Facility-wise?
The issue is, right now, we're not in design phase of the other schools. So we don't have plans right now to move them.
To.
The current plans that are, you'll see in my presentation, the current plan for John Muir, or the original plan, is way different than what we have. And we were going to go for three full, kindergartens at each site. Well, this one went to four. The other sites, we haven't had our design team come together and decide what we're doing yet. So we don't have a design for the other three to move forward in this.
To move forward with the larger expansion.
That's right.
Okay. Thank you.
So does this resolution apply only to John Muir? It wouldn't cover the other ones in the future?
It won't cover in the future. It's only for the ones we're in now. That's what you guys understand for our meeting, John and Joe. Correct? Would we have to reapply? We'd have to reapply.
But the resolution would cover, so.
Right. The resolution is there, but we'd have to reapply for the other ones. I know that we can't go, move forward with collecting the money on the other three schools, but I guess the resolution is district-wide.
Thank you.
The language in the resolution specifically states John Muir Elementary. Could we just retroactively amend the resolution or would this need to? retroactively amend the resolution, or would this need to come for a vote for each proposal? That's what I'm not clear on.
As I understand this, what we will have to do is, as we have the design plans finished for each site, we're going to have to resubmit to the state level for the funding for each site. So it may be that we have resolutions that come forward periodically as we get through the committee design process for each of the sites. But this one is only for John Muir because we have the site plans developed far enough along where we can send those forward with the resolution.
Can I ask, I'm sorry, I want to ask another question about the process itself. I mean, this has been talked about for a long time. Now Governor Newsom has made this one of his obvious priorities at the, just right out of the gate. He's talking about, you know, expanding TK and all the kindergarten. I mean, it's one of the major columns within his proposed budget. What is going to be the process to select schools for this? I mean, my fear is that it just becomes horribly arbitrary, and that, of course, worst-case scenario is that we won't get it. But it seems likely, but my pessimist inside my brain is saying, what are our, what are our chances, CJ? Is there a trivia portion of the contest? Is there an athletic competition?
I'm not sure what the state level may do, but John may be able to help us with that.
And can I just throw another question in there, too, since I'm hoping you'll address it? Is there a sunset time when, we clearly are going to be talking about our other elementary schools and the design process. Is there a time that we need to get there so that we can get in the hopper to make this application for money?
Yeah, so I think the first thing is, you know, that it's a priority-based application system, and it's all based on how many people are going to apply, and we don't know that. There is a criteria, only for like pre-reduced percentage, higher than percentage, you know, that helps your application. So that's, you know, again, we just want to get in line because we don't know how many are going to go in. When we started the review process, there was two rounds of funding, $100 million. Again, the proposed budget is another $750 million, and we were like, can we get in line for that first $100 million? Because it's going to go fast. But now, if they introduce more money, then it could help down the road. But we're just trying to keep every avenue open to get as much money as we can. If we don't go for this program, we'll try to go into another program. But we're going, we're tracking four different potential funding sources right now, even though they're all small.
Thank you. Any other board questions, discussion? All right, so the timing on this, you want to do it sooner rather than later, which is why it's coming to us as potential action. So if it's possible action, are there three shakes of the head to get this voted on? All right, I see lots of shaking heads. So I'll bring it to the board for action. We did public comment, I think, and then we brought it back for discussion. All right, so it's now to the board.
I move to adopt Resolution Number 2019-13.
That's been moved and seconded. Student vote?
Aye.
For the board, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? It passes unanimously. All right, thank you. 15.5 is review and approval of a new job description, Coordinator of Technology Services, and this is information, possible action. Do you have a working microphone?
I do. Thank you, Mr. Doppie. Your interim tech support skills are A-plus effort.
Thank you, our former. He was on support here. Thanks, Max Eisler.
So as we reference Max and his position, this agenda item is coming forward as a revised job description, which does include a revised salary line item for this position as well. As you know, despite some of the good news that we're hearing from Sacramento, and as Brenda, President of MEA, mentioned tonight, there does seem to be some good news on the horizon in terms of funding. We continue to face a number of challenges, as most school districts do, in terms of trying to manage the fiscal picture and be as efficient as we possibly can. So when we have positions that become vacant, one of the things that we have taken to doing within Martinez Unified, especially across the leadership level, is looking at positions and identifying where we can restructure to remain as efficient as possible and still deliver a good product for our students and support for our staff. In this example, we are taking what was the Chief Technology Officer position, and we are switching it to a Coordinator of Technology Services. We did research across the county and looked at the lead technology administrator for districts across the county. We believe that the scope of responsibility presented in this job description is in alignment with those positions, and we also have looked at the data to show that the revised salary schedule associated with this job description puts the position in the middle of the pack for the county in terms of where it might rank in terms of competitive salary and compensation. And this is here for your information and possible action tonight as we are moving quickly in the recruitment process for the Coordinator of Technology Services.
All right, are there any board questions on this?
I thought there should be a little bit more emphasis on supervising other people and some skills associated with that. I'm not quite sure where to put that. I see that it's way down on the list of activities, but one of the realities is this position does supervise other staff. So some education or experience in that respect, CJ?
Are you looking at that as a distinguishing characteristic?
No, I'm looking at something about...
A responsibility, or?
Well, it is in here as a responsibility. It's the third-from-the-bottom bullet on supervisors to the technology services staff. But on qualifications or ability, that would be where I would want to see something that relates to previous experience or education in terms of human resources. That's an area where people who haven't had a lot of experience supervising people can in fact get us in a lot of trouble. I've seen that in too many places that I have worked myself, so.
It does include instruct, train, motivate, and supervise technology personnel under ability to?
Right. I'm just, I'm just thinking that there needed to be a little more emphasis on that somewhere in the qualifications piece.
Into the education and experience piece of the job description?
Possibly, yes.
Okay.
I'm not, I'm not in, at this moment in time, I'm not into wordsmithing this. I'm just thinking that it would be helpful to add a little bit more that addresses that.
So one thing, the distinguishing characteristics, which is the number-two list there, it says supervises technology services and works cooperatively, so it...
Yeah, I saw the supervisors. I'm looking more in terms of, I know that that's what he's going to, he or she is going to do, but what experience and/or education do they have in doing that, in actually having done that?
In that case, I might suggest if we're going to make a modification, that we actually consider modifying the job description under the qualifications, under either, well, probably would fall more appropriately under ability to.
Yes.
And it might be there that we highlight that we are looking for the ability to supervise and mentor staff.
That's, adding the mentor is wonderful. That's a great idea.
So perhaps it might read, under ability to supervise and mentor staff within technology services?
Yes.
Any other board questions? I'll open it up to public comment. All right, we're going to, we'll bring it back to the board. This is somewhat, somewhat time-sensitive, so it is listed as possible action. Are there three shakes of the head? Seeing that, we'll bring it to the board for action.
Excuse me. I move, we approve the Coordinator, Technology Services, position description as modified.
I could second that.
No student vote. This is personnel issue. So as to the full board, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carried.
Thank you. Yeah, it would be an appropriate time to acknowledge and thanks, Max, for his service. I've done it at a few different places in writing throughout the district in recent times, but Max was a great contributor to Martinez Unified School District and was responsible for leading many initiatives across the district. We certainly wish him well in his endeavor in Dublin Unified.
Great, thank you. We'll move on to 15.6, which is Measure Our Projects, Bids, and Timelines. This is an information item, and we'll pass it back to Helen.
Okay, we're moving right along with our Measure Our Money and Projects. And next, our next board meeting, we should expect to see a resolution for the sale of our next $30 million bonds, which means that the John Muir project is so far, so good, knock on wood, and anything else we find moving along on schedule. But at the same time, as John Muir is moving along, we'd like to take a look at our timeline and our sequencing of our other projects, where we are, where we're going, and get a little bit of direction as if, to see if we want to stay on the same path we're on, or if we want to change things up due to some of the changes in our thinking and reality with John Muir planning. Can you hear me? Okay, I like, I'm trying to make a voice. Sorry. As you can see up here, this is our original last, in March of 2017, HY came and presented this chart, our Program Cash Flow Study, and it shows that in, it started in 2016, it was our first sale of bonds, the $30 million, which we do have, and it's in the bank. But we've spent a little bit on our planning stages in John Muir, but we do have this $30 million here. Our next $30 million worth of bond sales are projected to be this year, the 18, 19 school year. And like I said, next board meeting, we should have the resolution for those sales. It's in progress. The $3,100,000 that we did receive from state funding from Building K is all here and in the bank, sitting nicely in Fund 40, waiting for our Measure Our Projects, for it to be spent. So this is moving right along here. Down at the bottom half, where actual projects are, as you can see, we were to start the junior high locker room in 1718, but at a meeting, a special meeting we had in 2017, we decided in March of 2017 to hold off on this because the prices coming in for John Muir were the lowest, I think at that point, from HY, is our bid was about $42 million. So we decided to hold off on this. The other part that was making the John Muir increase was the potential to have to move the kids off campus and pay $4 million in temporary housing. So with the help of the design team and our GM and our bond project coordinator in HY, our team found a way to keep everybody on campus at John Muir and not have to spend that $4 million here. One of the reasons we aligned the projects as we did moving out from here, the breaking of Morello into two parts, a Phase 1 and Phase 2, was the fact that we couldn't really touch John Sweat or Los Juntas at that time because we were going to have to move the students from John Muir to those two schools in temporary housing. So we didn't know what that would look like, but we knew that we couldn't possibly squeeze them on that Morello Park campus. So it was to go ahead and start here, and then move into Los Juntas, and then John Sweat, and then back to Morello Park. So what I'm going to show you is just a little bit of what we did in the rest of this presentation, and a little bit about what we, what we know, some data about what we know about these sites, and what our priorities were right from the beginning, if you want to keep them the same, about sequencing and and the projects themselves. So let's just move forward here. So John Muir, as you know, was originally a, to be built with new classrooms here, but keep the old Muir, the old multi-use room. It was to be three kindergartens, but the main focus was modernization of the classrooms, the existing classrooms, a new kindergarten, and admin and library. Nothing really done to the multi-use room, and just the classroom, a row of classrooms that were new, I think, back here. What we, and that was all for the price tag of $38 million, 38.8. When our team got together, and this was the original list of what was to be done and how much it cost, when our team got together, we found that this did not really meet the goals of what we thought were the goals of modernization or redoing John Muir, which was to get the cars off the street to make sure it was a safe and secure campus, to make sure it was an equitable facility, and so on and so forth. And as you know, we came up and the board approved this project here of one long building for the same price as what was in the original cash flow. But for that same price, we did make one building. We ended up with four kindergarten rooms, a brand-new multipurpose room, a double classroom like they have in Building K for collaborative classrooms, a brand-new library, computer lab, and makerspace, which is right here in the, in the drawings. So what originally was in our master plan is obviously not what we ended up with, but our budget stayed the same, meeting the needs of the John Muir community and the planning team. So just as a quick recap in numbers, these are the budgets, and these were when they were supposed to start. As you know, we're right here, and it is now 1819. We won't start construction until probably, knock on wood, June 7, the day after school closes. But where, everybody is working hard to make that happen, CJ?
Helen, as we just look at this slide, one point of clarification for our Board of Education and for members of our audience is that when we're looking at this this evening, we're really looking at terms of the prioritization, prioritization in terms of sequencing the projects, but not a change of the dollar amounts associated with each project. And I think that's an important distinction for our board and for our public, because the board spent a lot of time going through reviews, recommendations, and analysis, and data points to try and come up with an equitable way of dividing the Measure Our funding. And so I just want to bring it to everybody's attention that we are looking at the sequencing of the projects, but not necessarily a significant reallocation of the original budgets that were drafted in terms of this conversation.
That's, that's absolutely correct. Sorry. Just to refresh everyone's memory, the priorities for budgeting and for sequencing, we're right here in our master plan. We were looking at growth, the aging facilities, the programs, safety, equity, and traffic in terms of safety and the community nearby, which we all know at the elementaries can be a little bit difficult for our community members. And so that was really a priority as well. So our next project, or our first project, was originally the locker room at the junior high. And I say the locker room, it's both locker rooms here. This was the focus of the money, just the highlighted, or the yellow here, were the ones that the $5.8 million was allotted for. This right here is the old actual wood shop area that the, that was to become a makerspace. Right now, Carmelo's using the classroom next to it, F103. This is F104, and that's F105. He's using all three of them, but the computer center part of it is in F103, and this is for other materials and storage and different activities. He's using all three, but it's not been remodeled. This here is the original, this is the boys' locker room here where it currently stands, and this is the girls' locker room where it currently stands. I went up with a tape measure. I knew we had to have, I think, you guys told me, 20 feet at minimum for emergency access to go up this fire lane. Right now, this wall comes out so that if we were to make this down to 20 feet, we'd only get about a foot to a foot and a half wider on the boys' locker room. This girls' locker room would be put here, and just, so you know, there are two exits, this is a double-door entrance, exit to the gym and the multi-use room and the locker room. The only double-door, other double-door exit from the multi-use room is right here. Putting the girls' locker room here would make it the identical size of the boys' locker room, but would shut off this exiting here. So you'd only be able to exit from these double doors, those double doors, and a single door out here, and a single door here. But from the multi-use room, in case of an emergency, by putting this locker room... But from the multi-use room, in case of an emergency, by putting this locker room here, you're leaving yourself one exit to leave this room, go out in the hallway and go out there, or a single door to get, you know, three to five hundred kids out through that side. I just want to keep that in mind because it really rings home to me from having spent so much time on that campus. It would be quite difficult. So that's the junior high project right there and the price tag on that. The Las Juntas Modernization Project, thirty million dollars, was going basically to put three kindergartens here, move the kindergarten here, build a row of classrooms here, here, and modernize these classrooms only. This was here to be a new library and a new admin and multi-use room. John Sweat was to modernize classrooms, that's what the, the orange color is, and to, this is a brand-new multi-use room, and to reconfigure the admin building here, but to make this multi-use room larger and, and brand-new. And this was a potential, but it was, it's not in the plan here, to put a music room out here, that's not there. This is the only part here are in the yellows and the numbers. Okay? And this is an extra kindergarten, so they would have went to three kindergarten classes because that was the goal, to make all of them have three. Morello Park was broken into two phases. And what I see Morello Park, this first phase is ten point seven and the second phase is seven point two. As over break, John, Mike, Joe, D J, and myself went through the elementary schools. We toured the elementary schools. And as you can see here, we made a list of pretty much what we knew about the property, what's working, what's not working, what's failing. And I sent that to the board ahead of time, and this is a condensed version. It's really hard to see what we've done and what we haven't done. So some of our elementary facilities, their, their sewer lines are not so good, or their roofs are leaking, or so on and so forth. And I, I thought to give you as much data as I possibly could to see about prioritization. But if I go back to this Morello Park, one of the things that's difficult at Morello Park is there's, compared to the other two elementaries, and I'm excluding John Muir because they're done, John Sweat has all this space. Las Juntas has all this space here. This is the brand-new field, but has all this space. Morello Park doesn't have space. So to expand here in kindergarten, we could only fit one kindergarten here. We couldn't fit a second to make it four full kindergartens. This here is, I think that's three classrooms there, if I can see correctly. Three classrooms here, but this is currently where Woodbridge is, which would mean Woodbridge would have to come over here. These buildings here, Mike, correct me if I'm wrong, are owned by the city. But the property is ours. Do I have that backwards? No, that's correct. Okay, so the property is ours here, but the, but the buildings are the city's. Here, right outside this line here, is the little park in front of the neighborhood there. That property belongs to the city. We were thinking, well, somehow could we come up with a way to talk to the city and maybe bargain and take a little bit of this land and give them the land their building sits on so we can put another kindergarten and maybe mirror image this over. But the biggest problem, well, the second biggest problem is construction-wise. If you see where this construction's supposed to happen, there's nowhere to put the kids during the construction. They can't stay on campus because it's not safe, and it can't be done. The project is too big to be done during the summer. So when we think about the Morello Park projects, we have to think about where we're going to put the kids. So if we're going to put the kids somewhere, we'd have to, we only have two other sites right now, which would be Las Juntas and, and John Sweat. So do we look at these two and maybe, you know, as we work with our design teams for these campuses, maybe build our structures out here, leave these, and then hit Morello by moving half of Morello into our old facilities before we knock them down? I mean, we've got to think about what we're going to do. Otherwise, I calculated it out with the number of students that are at Morello. That's five million dollars of temporary housing for a year, right? Because it was four million for John Muir. It's five million because it's a bigger school. And we only have seventeen million dollars to spend. So those are things that you've got to keep in mind. Why are you all looking at me like I'm doing my math wrong?
Well, aren't, aren't, we're not remodeling any of the classrooms. So we're just talking about the multipurpose room.
Yes.
So we could, but we can't bring, we couldn't bring a, like a multipurpose-sized portable for food?
We could do that. It's the space around here. It's not big enough. We would have to close off these classrooms right here for safe. Right. The ice, is that correct, John? It's buried in the campus that you couldn't isolate it. We'd have to close down the campus, the classrooms here. So there's a lot of discussion that's going to go into this. But, but for overall, I wanted to just point out the things that we discussed on our walkthrough for site assessments and, and, you know, where do we go from here?
I think one of the things, a few things to point out. First thing is, Helen, thank you initially for the presentation and to Mike, John, and Joe for all the work that, that individually you've put into preparing this information. It was very clear to me on, on our site walks that we have a lot of knowledge about our schools and our sites. I think one of the key things to point out in regards to Morello is when we talk about the multi-use room at Morello specifically, I think, D J, as you're pointing out, we could likely bring in a portable multi-use room and establish that somewhere on the campus for use. The problem is that the multi-use room at John Muir is just truly, excuse me, at Morello Park. It's just truly in the heart of the campus. The backside of that multi-use room backs up to the library to one of the third-grade classrooms, to, I think it's currently one of the second-grade classrooms, and the side of the multi-use room back up to a current fifth-grade classroom and I think a current third-grade classroom. So it's just troublesome in terms of where it's located on the campus from Morello Park. In its day-to-day function, it works well because the kids aren't traveling far to the multi-use room. It's at the heart of the campus. It's a, it's a hub of the traffic there. But in terms of thinking about trying to work on that from a construction aspect, we'd really have to isolate a number of the surrounding classrooms. So not only bringing in a temporary multi-use room setup, but we likely have to add a number of different classroom settings as temporary housing and trying to find space to do it there, certainly something we can talk about. I think the other good news is this is here for information only tonight.
And it's to see what other information you need from me to be able to, to look at this in depth. So if I go through here, this is just a suggestion. This is, oh, that's copied the old one. So I just want to remind everybody, one of the reasons we broke Morello Park into two phases is because we thought we had to house John Muir on the other elementary sites. And based on the current site analysis information and the change in timelines, I'm asking the board to review the sequence of projects to make sure that it doesn't warrant a change. I did include here the age of the elementary portables. I sent you a map as to where they are on campus. You can, there are, you know, four sets of, of portables on each of the three campuses. I also gave you a possible sequencing scenario that keeps all of the projects within their same budget, but it's just reorganizing them should we have to look at housing Morello Park students differently. It would break maybe Las Juntas and John Sweat into, I think John Sweat, well, into phases. Is that correct here? I can see it there. Break it into two and, and Las Juntas into three. But I thought about, I thought, I thought I'd give you a list of considerations to look at the age of the campuses, the age of the portables, the underground infrastructure, and all of the things that we listed in our site analysis. Where do we get the most complaints on pickup and drop-off or traffic flow? I would say that's pretty much across the board everywhere. Equitability, safety is another issue. And then concerns, student safety and housing during construction, construction equipment access, full-day kinder. If we're going to do full-day kinder at all four, we need to make that equitable at all four. And that means at Morello, we need to maybe start talking to the city about possible, you know, the plans or, or projections. We have to look at the feasibility of modernization versus replacement. Is it still, are needs still the same from two thousand fourteen when we made the master plan to today? Are they still the same? Have we repaired enough, or are we going to continue to put Band-Aids on things? Spending district money, putting Band-Aids and put, push projects to the end? Or do we need to reorganize what we're looking at? So a lot, it's a lot of questions. It was a lot of research and just looking for what you might need to be able to, to help us make a decision on sequencing.
I, I do have a question when we think about sequencing, and that is where are, or what site is costing us the most to just maintain it and repair things that we know are going to be changed? Which of our sites has become the most critical of our sites? Mike, this is probably a Mike question. Okay. And we know that John Muir, of course, but we've already made those plans. Yeah. Okay, thank you. That helps.
You know, my, my recollection was when we did the staging and we broke up Morello Park the way we did. It wasn't, it was also because of the way that the cash flow was going to be. And so we, you know, we purposely broke that apart. And I know there was a lot of discussion with the board because Morello Park really didn't get any proceeds other than the solar program. Everybody else had quite a, quite a bit of allocated money from Measure K that we wanted to get them in the hopper sooner. Part of my concern is if we push it down the road and we're seeing, well, we know that there's going to be a housing problem, we should also know that that's going to cost us more money. So if we push it down the road, are, there may be a likelihood that we run out of money or it makes me nervous if we push it too far down the road without really looking at it. And then I look at these plans and what we had thought we needed. And, and then I, you know, being myself, being a part of the, the John Muir process of, of getting to the final design, you know, I look at that and then I think, well, it's, it is right in the middle, but, you know, maybe it's more cost-effective instead of doing modernization. Maybe we just take out two of those classrooms and move everything over. We plunk a, you know, more cost-effective building instead of trying to do that modernization of putting those two pieces of old building together. I don't know. I don't do construction. But that, that to me sounds like there's a lot more creative people and professionals that might give us a better idea of how we can keep our students on camp. I mean, I can't imagine having to vacate that campus without putting, I mean, the purple is existing no work. So most of that campus is existing no work, but we're going to transport our kids all throughout the city. That doesn't seem like being part of that, I don't want to be a part of that meeting because I know everyone's going to say, wait, I want to stay in my classroom.
Well, I think, I think one area of consideration, or at least one area of reflection for me, D J, in terms of addressing the question about if it's pushed down the road, do we run out of money and, and does that make us nervous? I think, yes, it makes all of us nervous. I think it would be really important at that point to make sure. I think as we did for the John Muir project, to hold to, this is, this is the established budget. And I think recognizing that when the board had the foresight to develop the master facilities plan, it was intended to be a, a guide, a, a map for us to follow. I think the John Muir project itself is a great example of when we got that committee together. We got a lot of minds in the same space, trying to solve the same problems. And I think as Helen articulated tonight, we started with a plan. And I think Bobby may have said it this way at a prior board meeting, it's a plan, not a promise. And that, that John Muir design originally was a plan. We put heads together for key stakeholders, the staff, the parents, administration, our architects, our construction managers. And we came up with a plan that addressed the needs of the site. And I think there may be some benefit in exploring that for some of these different projects as well. Because when you look at Morello Park and you say, here's what we're trying to accomplish, I agree with you, D J, it may be something different than moving kids all over the place. And maybe we attack that problem a little bit differently. But I think if we hold strong to, these are our fair budget allocations or equitable budget allocations, and then try and solve the problems a little bit from there, that may be something that we want to explore for some of these sites.
If you look on Phase Two, there's modernization in all of those classrooms that aren't touched in Phase One. So they will get touched. They're just broken into, into two different phases. So the, the work that you see and, or the rooms you see in purple here are, are in yellow here, which means they're going to get modernization.
And maybe that make, I mean, so, so that could be an issue for budgeting for us in the, in the bond program because if we have to, we have to relocate, they should, it should all happen at once rather than spread out between a couple, a couple of years too. Yeah, if we have to relocate.
Right.
That's a pretty.
Well, if you look in this slide here, where's Morello Park here? There you go. It puts it all together right here, doesn't it? I can't see. So this one here and this one here, it's all done within a two-year period right there.
I would encourage, if we go back to the Morello Park, when the discussion committee gets down there, that if we're really looking at moving kids, that the budget should be whatever the building is plus the moving of the kids. And so therefore, if you could do something, let's say, what was the, we're talking ten million dollars or something?
It's seven, ten, seven, two, so it's eighteen.
Eighteen plus, yeah, another four to five to move kids, right?
I would, it would have to, there is no other four to five, so it would have to come out of the eighteen and leave. So the way I look at it is this is the budget that's given to me for John Muir, eighteen million. And if I have to use, just like we did when we looked at John Muir, we had twenty-eight million, and if we had to use four million in portable housing, that left us twenty-four million to build that school with. That was our budget.
If we don't build a five-million-dollar locker room, that could free up the dollars that we can press to help park.
For temporary housing.
Budget, which may mean we just tear down two classrooms to build out, be able to build multipurpose room. I think that should be the discussion. Now, if we blow five million dollars on a locker room, which you guys all know where I stand on, that money's not available. But I think that should be part of the discussions because we, as much as we didn't want to move John Muir kids, we don't want to move John Sweat kids.
Right, we don't want to move any kids.
So maybe we need to review that locker room to allow some funds to be freed up. Maybe you get rid of the two side cues, which will then allow us to build without having, I don't know.
I don't know what you mean.
You're giving me this lost look.
No, I just got lost. Maybe we lose the two side cues. What do you mean?
On the right hand, as you look at, under the food service and storage.
Right here?
No.
Oh, here. Okay.
We get the food and service storage.
Uh huh.
Two classrooms right above it. Come back on the map. Right there. Now go up the two.
Yeah.
It used to be Mrs. Hammond's classroom and she's gone.
The two on the side here?
Yeah.
Yeah, those, we looked at those and that, that's an easy way to make the kitchen bigger. I'll tell you that right now.
That's what I'm just saying is if we cut the locker room, we can expand the budget and allows us to maybe do some construction without moving kids. I think that needs to be looked at.
Or even look, yeah.
I'm just saying that's, I think that should be an option that should be explored.
Do, you know, I, I don't really know much about this part of the, the outdoor seating area. If we don't enclose the outdoor seating area and leave the outdoor seating area, I mean, I don't know how much of an impact that is because I'm not at that site and I never have been. So, you know, that would take construction out of the center here and just leave it here. I mean, there's a lot of options, but the first thing that we do usually is, you know, we got the team together for, and, and take a look at. those dollars and how they can best be spent. So we just need a, a little bit of direction, that's all, to move forward.
Well, when we did the John Muir, when everybody got together and looked at the John Muir, that plan changed dramatically. So who's to say that these other sites wouldn't be changed dramatically? Especially because one of the things that we did at John Muir was what we looked at student safety in terms of the single building piece. That was a big issue. We didn't have that as one of the issues we looked at for the other sites. We were looking at safety overall, of course, but we weren't looking at, because I know when I first looked at the John Muir, it was like, okay, how many exits do we have? Because I was feeling like you feel about the junior high, I'm a little concerned. But that seemed to work out as we looked at the ways to allow kids to progress and regress, so to speak. So I, I think before we can, I think we probably need to look at which school we're going to address next, or if we're going to do two next. Then we need to look at those plans and have the school communities come together to look at that. Because for, for right now, to me, we're talking about pie in the sky, actually. I don't, I'm not so sure that we would come up with the same plans at this, at this point that we did several years ago when we first put this together. Times and things have changed a little bit. So I'd like to be sure that we kind of address that. And I, I, I know what you're trying to get. You want more direction from us, but I don't know that I can give you more direction until I have more information. And I don't know what I want from you to do that. It's almost like I really want the school communities to come together and do at least a little bit to have us be comfortable with where we're going now. Um.
I mean, I think, I'll give some direction. To me, first thing we gotta do is figure out that locker. We gotta come up with a solution. If we're going to spend $5 million, then fine, we're going to spend $5 million. But that's the first thing I would, to me, that's the crux of everything. Let's figure out the locker room. That's a big budget item. And then that, as far as which school you apply next, I don't know. I'm going to depend on your guys' expertise, which you feel would give you the best, what would give you guys the best solution to have successful completion on time and on budget. And that just needs honest feedback from you guys.
Yeah, I think, I think looking at the locker room is, is going to be a key component. And I think it's a, a combination of what I think Kathy was saying as well is when we, we saw the most, it was a lot of hard work, but where we saw a significant shift for John Muir was when we started with the original model. I think for those that were on the committee, we probably went from that to five different options and narrowed it down to two or three before we got to the plan that we ultimately approved. And very happy that it, the contract came in on budget. But I think looking at the locker room, putting, the same thing that happened with John Muir, putting a lot of heads together from different perspectives to try and solve the same problem, I think yielded us the best possible result. I think if we apply that same sequence to the locker room, and then from there, I think looking at the elementary school projects and identifying which ones from an infrastructure standpoint, as Mike highlighted, are significant needs for us, all three of them having needs. But which ones are, are calling out the greatest needs in the greatest way under the infrastructure?
Well, and I, I've never felt really confident about, and maybe it's just we've talked about it so much, but the, the $5.8 million for the locker room, I don't, I don't like burying it. We've talked about it so much. We've definitely have had our share of the public who are here. I think it's something that we need to address and feel comfortable about. Is it really a $5 million project, or can we do something for less? And I, that's a, I know that's been floated around here a lot, but you know, if it's, if we can, if we can find a solution for some of the problems that have been identified at the, in the locker rooms and just move on, then we know going forward, we freed up money for other projects rather than just speculating down the line. I mean, the, the proposed one now pushes it back until 2023. And it's, I, I have a feeling whoever's on the board at that time is probably going to be having a pretty similar conversation as to, well, maybe we can do something different. So I would feel more comfortable moving forward with the rest of these budgets.
If we did the junior high.
If we did, if we were able to just get that piece out of there.
I would agree.
Uh, and then see where everything else fits because you know, we, we staggered the two bigger projects a little bit further down the line because because of, you know, Morello Park with, with the junior high, we're a little bit less than one of the next cash flow coming in. So that's how it ended up there initially. Maybe it still fits there, I don't know. But I think if we're, if we're always holding on to that $5 million but thinking we can spend it, we might run into problems.
Yeah, I think we need to look at the overall issue, whatever that is, and address the issue however we need to. And I'm not, I mean, the idea of a locker room for $5.8 million is a little outrageous. At the same time, I agree that we have some issues there that should be addressed in some way, shape or form. So there were things at the junior high that needed to be addressed. Maybe we do that first and look at what that budget would be, whatever has to be done there. But we don't have anybody really here to talk, like, right now. So we need to actually do the same thing we've done with even the other sites. Get a group of people together from the site, from the community, from the kids maybe, and see what's going on there. What can, what else could we do instead of that to make that work?
Can, can I just interject one thing? The locker room, when, when that was brought up, they were at capacity. The school was at capacity. The school has been declining in their enrollment. They're now at 954. They're projected to be a little bit less next year. But that locker room, the locker rooms are built for 1,050 students. I went up and checked, they're being assigned the lockers in the, in the right way. It's your typical locker room with the, the cutout, the cutout. The biggest thing that has changed as far as safety concerns are is we have one female PE teacher and four male PE teachers. And therefore, the supervision in the locker room is left up to the one teacher aside from when the, we have the campus supervisors ducking in and out. But that, to me, the space, it's tight, but every locker room is tight. Nobody, you know, it's not your own dressing room and it's not your house. It's going to be tight, but it is, the supervision part is, to me, the bigger obstacle. Because while you're trying to look down there and what's going on down there, you're giving four kids their combination because they lost their combination. I get that. But the, but as far as the facility being built, that it was built for 1,050 kids. And you can correct me if I'm wrong, but that's, that's my recollection when I was there when it was built.
I think another note I was going to make in terms of the conversation, Kathy, as you're describing it, identifying a locker room and, and what does that project look like? The other thing, and I would just want to make sure if I'm listening and making some assumptions that are, that are in agreement with what you're saying, identifying the scope and cost projection of the project doesn't necessarily also mean that we have to wait for the completion. It may mean that once we identify the scope and costs, that there's other concurrent things happening while the actual construction of that project is taking place. Is that a agreeable statement?
Yeah, I agree, but I don't think we can, I, I think what Deidre is saying, if I'm hearing you right, is we've got this almost $6 million thing sitting here. And we can't really, until we figure out if, what, where, how, how much it's going to cost, we can't really do these other things. For, for one of that little thing, we're getting stuck on the other plans. So I, I would like to see us at least look at that. And I, I know what you're saying too, Helen, it's, you know, the population has changed. But my recollection of that locker room is the line of sight issues are significant if there's a bunch of kids in there and there's one person trying to supervise.
That's the one, that's the issue, the one person. Because it's always going to be line of sight whenever you have a room with copy, you know.
Exactly.
But that's.
But there's got to be, there might be a different way around that rather than build a new locker room.
I know.
Do you need to, do we need, as a board, do we need to give direction to see if we can, you know, cut that budget in half? Is it even possible? I mean, if it's not, because if we say you have $5.5 million to remodel the locker room, we're going to get a $5.5 million locker room. But, right, don't you, I mean, but if we can, see if we can get it in a less of a budget and still address line of sight issues or it, some of the expansion, because my understanding is during, when, especially Wednesdays, when the, you've got more kids in there at a particular time, when there, there's two classrooms in there at one time changing. I don't know. Yeah, but, but i- is it even possible? And like, we don't know.
Well, and I think the other thing we need to be sure we're addressing is the, the title issues around equity for the girls and the boys, and I can't stress that enough, that we need to, we're not just building for today with our population, but we're building to ensure that there are equitable facilities for both boys and girls as we go forward, as populations change, et cetera.
There's also, we're going to do a site walk assessment of the junior high. And I think we're going to find, after I've been poking around up there, I think we're going to find that there's a lot of work that needs to be done up there that hasn't been done since the 90s as well. But that's the next thing is, is the locker room, the, the biggest problem there now, or is it maybe a bigger system that's failing? So we have to do that yet. So what I thought, bringing this today was just for information, but you ask me if you need any other information, I go out and get it. I'm in the process of putting the RFP out for construction management, followed by the RFP for architect two weeks later, three weeks later, and have everybody on board before I can have the site team meetings. Because I'd like to be able to have an architect and, and, and instruction management all there as well.
There's one thing. In the master plan.
So we have time.
Everything out, gave everything scores.
Mm-hmm.
And the building committee, can we go back, look at the scores, sort of do a cost analysis on deferred maintenance versus the teeny stuff now? And I don't know how you do it, but like a cost benefit, we get more bang for our buck addressing this now instead of laying it out versus that, as the schools as a whole. Because you know, there's some things where you can defer, like Mike, you know what I'm talking about? You know, like what, what can be deferred out that's not going to run up costs? Whereas if you defer some things, you're just throwing money into the hole. And go back to those schools, go back to the scores, look back at the cost benefit. What would get, what elementary schools would give us the biggest bang by addressing items now, comparing to deferring costs at other sites? And if you could give us some kind of, I don't need dollar analysis, but sort of like a grading system.
Okay. Can I ask a question about the scores? Was that done on paper, computer? Do you remember?
It was done shortly after I joined the board.
It's in the, it's in the, it's in the plan?
Okay, I just want to make sure.
Thank you, John, because I think that was what I was getting at when I asked which of the schools is costing us the most now. Because if there's things we're changing and meanwhile, we're Band-Aiding, not to the cost of box of Band-Aids, but at thousands and thousands of dollars, we need to look at that too, because we need to be fiscally responsible with this $120 million. And just having a plan to be fiscally responsible is one thing, but being able to implement it, we have to be smart about how we're focusing on the different projects. I agree with you completely.
I, I agree as well, John, and very well articulated. But the one thing to consider about ongoing maintenance is that there are some fixed maintenance costs, especially on an older facility, but then all of a sudden, things can go wrong even on a newer facility. But that said, you know, reviewing the total maintenance costs that we're incurring at all campuses that are up for potential work, I think is the right way to go. But I, sorry Helen, you made a comment earlier that we're all giving you crazy looks. My eyebrow was raising very high because having gone through the process with, with John Muir, which I, I felt was an excellent process, really. One of the best sort of committee sets of discussions I think I've ever had in my entire life, quite frankly. Well done, group. We're all patting ourselves on the back still, but and granted, I joined the board, you know, after or around the time the master facilities plan was being adopted. And discussions around housing of Morello students never came up. And I'm, I'm thoroughly confused about this. Because I, I love this sort of stuff, as, as my wife and parents can tell you. I mean, I, I, I love to review plans and, and think about how we can move buildings around. And I'm looking at Morello and for the life of me, it never occurred to me that the location of the multi-purpose room was going to cause such a headache. But then I think, you know, I've lived in big cities and I work in downtown Oakland and there's giant construction happening around my office all the time. And I mean, within ti- excuse me, tiny, tiny spaces, right? And, and some of those are, are adjacent to schools and public park facilities. And, you know, I, I, I want to see a bit more evidence that the proposed construction on the NPR would in fact cause accessibility issues for, for the rest of the campus. Although it is right there up at the front, I can't see why it can't be cordoned off in some way. And, you know, maybe that's just too expensive. Maybe there are rules around school construction that I'm woefully ignorant of. I'll be the first to admit, I'm not a school architect, nor do I pretend to be one. But I've been on that campus, it, it seems like there's sufficient space, maybe not. But then I, but then I go back and think about the work that has to be done at La Suntis and John Sweat, and that starts to, to make me nervous as well. You know, if we're up to me and I, I had the authority, we would have had a bond for a significantly larger of money, amount of money, and we wouldn't have to worry about this stuff. But we do have a finite amount of money in this bond. And if we think about what has to be done first, you know, it's got to be what's costing us the most money right now. Because like Bobby said, then it's just not being fiscally responsible. I would love to also punt some of these issues back to site committees that we could potentially form in the way that we did for John Muir, not guaranteeing that there would be such an excellent outcome because that was a magical group. But you know, lightning may strike, strike twice, because this is Martinez and who knows? But the thing is that I just worry about the limited amount of money. And I do also have concerns about our Title IX requirements. And I know that there are issues with that locker room. I do, I, I've always wondered about that $6 million price tag, because let's call it what it is, it's going to be $6 million if and when we get to it. And if, if it's just a matter of rearranging the lockers for line of sight issues, then by all means, let's do that. We don't have to tear down walls and, and, and eliminate emergency exits. If it's an issue of personnel, then let's deal with that in a site administrative issue. Right? Like, we're here to discuss facilities. If it's truly a matter of there isn't sufficient personnel to administer a locker room full of young women because there's a lack of female employees, then let's solve that problem through the administrative process, right, through the personnel process. So I just want to be fiscally responsible with this money, but also ensure that our staff and students are going to school and clean, insulated, well at places that aren't leaking and where people don't have to wear down jackets to be inside. Right? Some of these costumes are really cold. I'm looking at John Sweat, right? It's, it can be really cold down there. So that, sorry, I was quiet for a long time and now it's just flown out. But I just want to be fiscally prudent and think about what really needs to get done first, echoing what John said, because it's totally right on.
If there are no other board questions, I'm going to open up to public comment. I did get at least one public comment card from Brenda.
It sounds like you're going to look more into the lockers before deciding not to do them. And I have been there. I have talked to Shar. I talked to Shar when there were two women there that were in the locker room. And she did not want to lose a female person there. It's been very difficult. There are not enough bathrooms for the girls to use. There's only two bathrooms. Girls at that age have certain needs and the, the lines for the bathrooms would be really, really long. There's a line of sight issue. There's not enough room in that locker room, she says. When I went there and talked to her at length, when you have handicapped children that are trying to put their stuff into the locker, they take a lot more room and you can't assign the lockers in the same manner. So I really hope that you consider the equity issues of the girls locker room actually needing more bathrooms and, and also safety issues. uh, of the girls locker room actually needing more bathrooms and, and also safety issues. There's bullying that goes on because there's one person there. Um, the way it's designed, you cannot see down, you cannot see all of the children. Um, I don't know what you're going to do, if you're going to break down all of those, uh, different areas that, yeah, those partitions, I don't know how that's going to work. Um, but it definitely has some major issues that need to be solved, so, um, don't, don't quit looking for solutions. It has to be solved.
Thank you. Any other public comments on fifteen point six? All right, I will, um, this is our information. We had quite a bit of discussion and, um, we will look forward to having it come back. Um, fifteen point nine is the first reading of the CSBA policies and adminis- did I miss one? I got so excited. All right, fifteen point seven. Uh, review of school calendars for two thousand nineteen dash twenty, uh, twenty, twenty, twenty-one and twenty twenty-one dash twenty-two. This is an, I know, an information item. It seems like a really long time in the future, but it's here. Um, all right, Tom Dopey, and thank you, gentlemen.
All right. So yes, we do, uh, want to bring for information tonight. We provided an update a few board meetings ago, just on the status of uh, where we were, uh, with our calendar committee, the considerations that we had at that time. And, uh, you have before you tonight, three years worth of calendars. So just by way of overview here in short form, uh, we've definitely received a lot of stakeholder input. Uh, there were five calendar committee meetings over the last two years, uh, three last year, two this year. Uh, that calendar committee, uh, comprised of parents, MEA members, CSEA members, administration as well. Uh, we sent out that community survey earlier this school year. Uh, we shared that data and graphs, uh, earlier, but just in a more condensed version here as a reminder, some of the areas that were noted of high importance, obviously time with family, it was mentioned in our calendar committee as well, the desire to see, uh, more chunked periods of time instead of, um, maybe a series of three-day weekends, say over the course of the year, or days in the middle of the week and things like that. The ability, uh, for families to begin scheduling their summers and, uh, vacations, uh, proactively. I know that we've had calls down here wondering about next year, and, uh, now as we were humorously saying a minute ago, we will be thinking all the way about vacations in twenty twenty-four, I guess, before we have to worry about not knowing, uh, when school starts. Uh, finals before the break, uh, that happened this year as well, but, uh, continuing that practice. And, uh, the community also, uh, felt strongly that with that, then having a true winter break, uh, no homework over the break, I'm sure Fatima might chime in later, but in talking with, uh, students myself up at Alhambra, uh, in and around the time of finals, uh, that did seem to accomplish what we had hoped for, which was more of a true, um, end of the semester and using that break really to help reset things. Areas that were of lower importance, we did ask, and it was, uh, communicated that the idea of ending in June, specifically in mid-June, was uh, a low importance, it would not seem to matter to the public, at least those reporting in the survey. And they also expressed, uh, no real concern about the impact that moving the school year up would have on summer camps, childcare, volunteering, student jobs and things of that sort. It really just continued to be, uh, about vacations and time with family during the summer. Also want to, uh, acknowledge that we had, um, several conversations with CSEA and MEA, each union group. Uh, had some of their own, um, quirks of the calendar that we had to work out, issues with maybe the days or the starting and end and, uh, being able to come back in July, for instance, with CSEA. Uh, but through that process, MEA actually was, uh, quite helpful in problem solving, uh, one of the issues that we were able to agree upon. Uh, and as it stands now, both CSEA and MEA leadership have approved the calendars. Highlights as well, uh, this will achieve that closer to balance semester that we lost this year with eighty-six and ninety-four days. It will keep us, as I'll show you in our next slide, uh, in step with other districts in the county, uh, who are all making this migration backwards. Uh, we did add a teacher workday. So currently there are three and a half professional development days and one and a half teacher workdays. Uh, this would now be two and a half and two and a half. It moved the professional development day, uh, that we do have, uh, into January. So now we'll have one and a half professional development days in August, one in January. So that also is a nice opportunity. I think our site admins are excited about that prospect of having a professional development day really to kick off the second semester and to kind of catch our breath midway point about reflecting on the first semester, getting started on the second. And then, uh, as we problem solved with MEA, we've come up with a solution where now that teacher workday, regardless of whether uh, you're a secondary teacher and your, uh, grading period, your semester is ending before the break, or an elementary teacher and you're taking more of a true half midway point in the year for, uh, report cards, that workday will be in closer proximity, uh, to the report card period for, um, both levels of schools. So this is a graphic we've showed before. Uh, this would be then where with our current calendar, we would sit in context or with the calendars that are in front of you tonight for information, where we would sit in comparison with our other, uh, districts in the county. Uh, the, the right hand or left-hand side there this school year. Uh, that would keep us really right there in the middle where we were, uh, starting on the fourteenth of next year. I did not put ahead the next two years worth for every district, tried to keep it here short and sweet. That matter, not sure if they have even gone that far, uh, but you can see there, we would begin on the fourteenth, the twelfth and the eleventh, that is consistently the second, uh, Wednesday of every August in each of those successive years. And then the corresponding, uh, the corresponding last day of school happening in May. So really to kind of sum this up, uh, you know, th- this begins with a real interest in trying to do its best academically for our students and also along the way, they're taking into account, uh, how we can provide that break in the middle of the year. That counts to support their mental, emotional wellbeing as well. Um, and we look forward to, uh, seeing the board's, um, thoughts about these calendars now that these represent a final product as we see it through that process that we've, uh, explained.
If I may, and I, I, I know I brought this up before, but, um, that teacher workday that we end up with on the first day of June, I know it's an administrative process due to, um, uh, uh, CalSTRS re- requirements, correct? I mean, do we, do we see that changing? Because it just seems, frankly, and all due respect to the people who perform the hard work of administering CalSTRS, it's silly. I, 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 I don't know how MEA feels about it. I haven't spoken with you all about it, but it just seems odd. And I can't imagine that there aren't people open to a suggestion in Sacramento who, who, who would be willing to make some sort of administrative rule change, because if, if so many other districts are moving to this type of a schedule, we're going to be seeing districts all the way down the state saying, oh yeah, we're, we're done, but by the way, uh, our certificates staff have to come back on the first of June. It just seems so weird to me. You know, what can we do to fix that? And give me a roadmap and I'll go and knock on some doors in Sacramento. Just add it to my list. It's okay.
I, I, I can't tell you what we'll do, but we have confirmed that that is a real, a current reality, uh, with CalSTRS. But, uh, certainly is, to your point, uh, it may very well just become something that is, um, part and parcel with so many district operations that it has to be discussed. We'll let you know what the addresses are when I find out.
I mean, we can just call Tony Thurman, right? And, and he can take care of it for us, right? For what we worked hard for. Oh, singularly. Yeah. Good job.
All right. Any, um, any other board questions on this? Thanks for, thanks for the presentation and all the hard work. Um, let me open it up to any, uh, let's see, I don't have any public comments. Do we have any public comments on this?
First of all, I'm really, really glad that we're going to have three years of calendars up finally. Um, not having those up for a while has made it difficult for people to plan. And the district worked with us, uh, for modifications to make it a little bit more palatable. Um, there's still going to be a huge impact over the summer for some teachers, because it's up late enough where people have already made their plans, their vacation plans. Um, also, many of our young people and our part-time people work over the summer, and there's no way to, there's no way out of it. It's a week less of summer. Um, we're actually, if you look at the calendar year, uh, working more during that period of time. I think most of the issues can be worked out, but, um, we do need to look at, at some other impacts, um, with this calendar. Possibly a floating workday, uh, was floated out there where, uh, you could have one floating workday and that might uh, mediate a little bit of coming back in June, because at, at one point, I think it's like five or six days that school is over and then we're supposed to come back in June. It doesn't hurt those of us that have twelve-month checks. If you have a twelve-month check, you get a twelve-month check. Uh, but those people that maybe have elected to stay with the eleven-month check, those are the people that are affected by that June workday. So, um, a lot of hard work went into this, a lot of people with good intent trying to solve a lot of different problems. As a parent, I would like to make a comment that my child took finals before Christmas and still spent a lot of her Christmas holiday, uh, doing homework and studying. So if that's what you are laying your hat on, I think that you need to make sure that children are actually getting that break. Um, I have a college-bound student that's, um, works very, very hard. Um, she did not get that break. So, um, that's as a parent, I'm saying that. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Any other public comment? All right, we'll move it back to the board. Uh, this, when, when can we expect this to come back?
Uh, this will come back at the next regularly scheduled board meeting. And, uh, I just did want to, uh, clarify one point Brenda made. Brenda, thank you for your public comment. It is a shorter summer, but it's that the first summer is the one that's shorter. After we make the transition, the summers will go back to being the, the same duration that they have historically been, but Brenda is absolutely correct that the first summer we make that shift, there is an impact in that first summer because it is shortened.
Great, thank you. Um, all right, well, let's move on to fifteen point eight, which is the review of the school accountability report cards. Uh, it's another information item presented by Tom Dopey.
Thank you. Uh, no presentation, uh, on the PowerPoint that goes with this. You have uh, each of the school's accountability report cards, uh, included with our agenda this week. It's an information item, as you, uh, well know, there are many presentations we give over the course of the year about different data points, whether it's our performance on the smarter balance test, whether it's our local indicators, our dashboard, our suspension rates and things like that. It's the aim of the school accountability report card really to consolidate that information into one document, uh, for parents. There's not much, or the public for that matter. Uh, there is not much narrative with this that would be unique or that really, uh, shows anything different than what has been presented this year. This aligns with our LCAP, covering the conditions of learning, things such as our facilities, um, our staffing, pupil outcomes, our testing, um, and as well as our engagement suspensions, uh, and things such as that. So this is something that has to be, uh, submitted to the state February first every year. Uh, here presented to the board first, and then after, uh, approval from the board, we'll go to the state and then post it publicly on our websites to inform the public of all of these various data points about each of our schools. One other, uh, point I will add of clarification as well, uh, I believe, uh, Marilyn's comments earlier about staffing were actually, uh, a section of the s- uh, school accountability report card. You'll see that in each, uh, that it breaks down staffing ratios and expenditures. Um, so earlier when she commented on the single plan for student achievement, in the event that there is, uh, an adjustment that needs to be made, this is only coming to you tonight as information.
Thank you. Any board questions? All right, uh, we do have a public com- uh, this is the right one, right? Yep. Uh, okay, we have one public comment card, Brenda. Fifteen point eight. Oh, did you mean seven? Okay. Did you mean for the last one? Okay, see, it's not just me. All right. We're good. I, I, I missed both of them. I went on to nine. So, okay. Um, all right, seeing no public comment, we will move it back to the board and we look forward to having this back to us for action in an upcoming meeting. Now, finally, uh, fifteen point nine, first reading of CSBA policies and administrative regulations for information. And it's CJ.
Thank you. Uh, as noted on the agenda, this is the first reading of CSBA policies. As the board is, uh, accustomed to and our public likely accustomed to hearing as well, we regularly review our CSBA updates, reflect on what they mean for us locally within our policies and present revisions to the board in accordance with staff recommendations. These updates are from December of twenty sixteen, December of twenty seventeen, and October of twenty eighteen. They are here for information only this evening.
I have a question. On, uh, board policy five one four one point two one A. Why would we want to delete language authorizing the superintendent or designated to make naloxone available? Why, why would we not want naloxone available?
I'll have to pull that policy up one moment.
Just for folks' reference, naloxone is a lifesaving drug in the event that, um, someone has an overdose to, an opioid, an opioid. Yeah. Yes, please. Personally, I think that's a mistake and, and, and not to step on the, the, the hard work of, of many highly skilled, intelligent people, but you know, we're living in, in very troubling times and unfortunately, in this community as well, like many others throughout the country, far too many individuals are, are falling victim to opioid abuse, um, and, and, and overdose. I mean, just a couple of days ago, there was a mass overdose in Chico and it occurred without anyone's knowledge. These drugs are, are an absolute scourge on, on our community and it's going to get to the point where frankly, um, I believe that availability of naloxone and other lifesaving drugs in, in the event of opioid overdose are going to become as ubiquitous as, uh, the automatic def- defibrillators. I for one would, would very much hope that we keep it available here on, on our, our, uh, district sites, because you never know. And I mean, I'm, I'm some, I personally, I can't ever take opioids. I'm, I'm definitely allergic to them. So I never take them in, in, in any way, shape or form, because it, you know, then I'll need uh, uh, other type of auto-injector, the epinephrine, which I'm glad to see is still included. But I think if we're going to include something like an epinephrine auto-injector, we ought to include naloxone.
Is it something that we include now?
It is something that, uh, based on the inquiry from Jonathan, we can certainly reflect on that and gather some more research and, uh, bring back a response at the next regularly scheduled meeting where these policies would, would come forward. And then at that time, the board could make further decisions or have further discussion about whether or not they want to include it.
Yeah, that sounds great. Okay. Any other board questions? Uh, any public comments? All right, we will, uh, bring those back, uh, at a later date. Uh, the six, uh, item sixteen, uh, has been removed. We didn't have a need for that. Uh, number seventeen are, uh, comments from superintendent, board members and future agenda items minus our announcements from earlier. Um, so yes, Fatima, you want to go first?
Yeah, so, um, just going on with, uh, what Mr. Dopey was talking about earlier. Uh, the, having finals before winter break, um, was actually a good thing. A lot of students were really happy about that. I personally was against it at first, just because I like using that break to study. But after having done it, it was actually, uh, a nice break to have. And then what earlier Brenda Navarro said about having homework, I, um, so I did have homework over the break, but it wasn't as bad as other students that I've heard about that got assigned homework. So, um, I think it's just something to keep in mind. Um, and then I also wanted to bring another issue that just started, um, I've had teachers come up to me and talk to me about it. So our, last year, um, Mr. Fuller brought up the desk situation with the furniture. Now, a lot of people didn't like the furniture. There was another issue that um, recently like uh, I was made aware of was we were implementing new air conditioning systems at our school. And our past air conditioning systems, teachers were able to control if they were able to turn it on and off. And uh, from what I've been told, uh, new air conditioning, air conditioners have been added to some classrooms. But teachers aren't able to control the air conditioning. And they're, they've been kind of irritated with them just because one, uh, for example, like today and the past few days from last week. The, we're in winter, so the weather's cold. It's um, the air conditioning um, is making a sound. So first off, it's disrupting the class. But also the students are um, freezing in the classrooms. And the teacher can't do anything about, about it because they don't have the controls to do that. So I just wanted to make that aware. I know you guys earlier were talking about um, modernizing buildings and that. I am, I just want to bring this concern up. If we do move forward to adding new um, furniture and modernizing our schools. I think you should take into account students and teachers' opinions and how um, it's going to affect them. Because ultimately, they're the ones that are going to be using the resources and not us. So, thank you.
Great, thank you. Uh, any, anyone else? Anyone else, John?
Just on, I think it would be nice just to have a quick report on new construction at the high school. Other problems that might be facing. Some of the good stuff. I have heard that pencil sharpeners, the death of electrical in some classrooms. Okay, one classroom. Can't plug in the same thing. But I think it would be nice just to have a, a quick update, doesn't have to be long extensive, but just problems that were faced, hurdles that, solutions that were met.
Sound good, okay, Jonathan?
Towards the end of twenty eighteen, we had a report on facilities, um, specifically the Briones property. As well as other district-owned properties, district-owned properties, including the adult school on the former Vicente and Briones campuses. I would like to follow up with that. I know that we had to uh, uh, hire an outside contractor to, to move forward with gathering further information about the um, Brones Valley lot. But as for, or the Alhambra Valley lot. But as far as uh, moving forward with information about the adult school and the Vicente, the former Vicente Briones campus. I, I would very much like to get, uh, keep this on our radar so that we can get more information about potential uses for that site. And what we might do with it so that it can be used by the whole community as, as well as the school district. Up to and including things like district-owned affordable housing for district employees and multi-use facilities. So that we can have uh, the adult school functioning while people are living in commerce is taking place. All in a nice infilled, dense urban environment that is downtown Martinez.
Okay.
I'm good, thank you. Happy New Year.
All right. Happy New Year to all of you. Our next regular meeting will be on January twenty eighth, two thousand nineteen. With that, we adjourn for the evening.